Okay.
Hey, we got sound now? Good, good? You just don't have the streaming? Okay. Are we all good? Yeah. Okay. And then streaming's good up there? We're all good? Okay. You're good. Sorry about this, everybody. We're having just a little bit of technical difficulties. As soon as we get those straightened out, then we'll get the meeting underway.
Testing. So this one's hot.
I'm good.
Me too.
You good? Did you hear? Everybody hear that?
No.
No?
You'll have to go mic on. And that'll turn the mic on.
Hello, testing.
Yeah, he's good there. Y'all good?
Well, we have to do the same thing. So you have to turn their mics on.
Oh, gotcha.
Test.
That way we don't talk over the chair.
All right, is everybody up now?
Well, Jay, he'll have to... So every time you want to mic up, they'll show up green. They have their hand raised saying they want to speak. And then you'll have to touch them and hit mic on. And the reason this is set up this way is because we have court members who don't understand that you can't just yell over everybody. You have to be recognized.
Okay, y'all don't let me forget that, okay?
I'll remind you.
Yeah, let's fix this, because we've done this one way for... I've been on here five years and we've done it the same way. All right. No, I was just saying, I was just asking if we were...
Oh, they don't have your cards in, do they?
Yeah. Because I'm telling you before, Brian, all we do is just hit our mic and talk. We're a little more controlled than this board.
Yeah, all right. Then you can turn me off.
Sam? Are we waiting on me? No? Okay. Yeah, just remind me when you get to that point, don't let me forget. And then I'll make sure that we're all good. All right, everybody, if I can have your attention, then I'll call the September 30th, 2021 Washington County Planning Board to order roll call.
Joel Kelsey.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Neil Helm.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here.
Lisa Miller and Kiera Lures are not in attendance.
Yeah, let's just do it like that. While we're doing this, just yell. Where I'm not having to hit everyone. All right. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And if you do, I'll take a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion for approval as stated.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Seda is the agenda as is? All right. I'll take a motion in a second on the approval of the agenda as is.
I'll make a motion for approval, agenda is stated.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll go into old business. First item up is Fayetteville Planning Area Ellis Estate CUP. It'll be presented by Seda. Before we get started and get on further into it, I'll state again that when I move into public comment, you get three minutes, 10 minutes if you're speaking for a group. I will reiterate that, you know, we're here again five weeks later. So a lot of what was said last month is still fresh in our minds. So if you've got something extra to add, that's great. I'm not going to stop you from speaking. You still want to get up and speak, that's fine, but let's be respectful of the time. So, it's up to you, Seda.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for dealing with our... being patient with our technical difficulties. So the Ellis Estate subdivision proposal situated within the eastern portion of the county. It's within the city of Fayetteville's planning area. And the subject parcel sits along the north side of Mission Boulevard, Highway 45. So the applicant is requesting to develop a subdivision whose lots are less than one acre in size. The area is currently zoned for agricultural and single-family uses of one acre per unit or one unit per acre. So tonight's request is to address the non-conforming lot sizes within the proposed subdivision. Oopsie, I went too far. Sorry. So at the August 26, 2021 Planning Board meeting, the CUP for the Ellis Estate subdivision proposal was heard, but I had asked the Planning Board not to consider lot sizes due to misunderstanding between the city and the county. However, we clarified some of that. And just so everyone's all on the same page, Fayetteville did approve the subdivision at their August 9, 2021 Planning Board meeting. And a copy of that is... the Planning Board members in attendance should have a copy of that. Or it goes through the staff report and the subdivision committee report, and it does show that they approved it. So the applicant originally requested to develop a 59-lot subdivision with 56 lots being residential, and all of the 56 residential lots were under the minimum required of one acre. They ranged in size from .23 to .4 acres in size. During the discussion period, many members of the public spoke in opposition about the density, comments, you know, voiced concerns about the potential for an increase in traffic issues. Highway 45, which is the state highway, is already gridlocked during school drop-off and school pickup. And there was a large concern that an additional 100, 100-plus vehicles coming from this subdivision would make that situation worse. There were concerns about how the density would bring in more neighbors whose backgrounds were unknown. There were concerns about the design of the subdivision and its dubouts, and how the subdivision would connect to an adjacent subdivision and increase the traffic flow through their currently quiet neighborhood. And after hearing the many concerns, the board voted in favor of tabling the project to allow the applicant an opportunity to redesign their subdivision and hopefully allow for a more conforming lot size. So this is the current site plan. Apologize for kind of the... the words are very small, but we'll zoom in a little bit later. So it looks, again, very similar to the prior one. However, there are four less lots, and many of the lots have increased in size. The lot numbers have changed, so I wasn't able to tabulate, you know, lot one prior, lot one current or new because they weren't the same lots. So I decided to do a comparison and try my best to show what the differences are based upon the location of lots instead of lot numbers. So the first set of lots will go north of the proposed Roop Drive. And so the top is the prior that was presented at the August meeting, and then the bottom is the new proposal. Most of the lots have changed and were missing a lot, basically. It was absorbed in order to make lot sizes larger. The top numbers, of course, are from August, and then the bottom numbers in bold are the new submittal. And then, so we're going to go kind of along that western side of Bari and Matira. And again, on the left side is the prior, and on the right side is the new. The residential lots are on the top, the top two, they increase in size. And then the bottom two, the detention lot and the lot that hosts the sewer processing plant, do not change in size. And then we go along the bottom, south of the proposed Amalfi Drive. We lose two lots from the prior. They get absorbed so that the currents can increase, and they all increase. And then we go east of the proposed Luca. I'm so sorry for all the arrows, but the lateral lined, the leach field basically decreases in size so that the residential lots can grow. And we also lose one residential lot from the prior. And then I didn't know what to call these ones, so I call them the internal lots, but they do not increase in size. They stay the same, but their lot numbers do change. And because this is the CUP, I do have to address some of the things that we addressed last time, so apologize for the redundancy. But so this map shows basically the nearby subdivisions within a half mile. The purple circle represents a half mile. I tried not to go into the city of Fayetteville, which is kind of on the western side in the gray. Anyhoo, there's approximately 16 subdivision developments within a half-mile radius of the proposed Ellis Estate subdivision. And then all the parcels in yellow here are parcels that have a density of less than one acre in size. I do know this caused some concern prior, but again, these are lots within subdivisions that are less than one acre. Again, Section 11-88 and Section 11-55. Section 11-88 says the minimum lot size has to be 10,000 square feet or .229 acres in size, and all the residential lots in this new proposal exceed this minimum requirement. Section 11-55 is conformance to official plans that the subdivisions located within the growth areas shall be developed in accordance to that city's standards. Again, this has been through the city of Fayetteville for review, and they have approved it. Oops, sorry. There we go. There are some existing structures on the property, and these will be removed once the applicant has been approved to actually start construction. A majority of the property is undeveloped. This is looking left or east along Highway 45, and this is looking right along Highway 45. And these pictures were taken about maybe an hour before pickup. Notifications, again, had been sent to property owners. Any additional comments that staff received, I did my best to print them off and give them to the Planning Board members. However, if you sent me a notification any time after, I would say, 2:00 p.m., they are not included in the update packet, and I do apologize. Staff has reviewed the CUP's submittal documents and feels that the proposed use could be made compatible with the following conditions. These conditions have not changed since last month. Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
I've got a couple. Oh, sorry. Y'all that want to speak? No, I've got it fixed so that everybody can mic themselves up now. Perfect. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All right. My questions. For clarification, the design of the subdivision was approved by the city of Fayetteville?
Yes.
Okay. Which leaves the lot size and the CUP to us.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone from 54 to 50?
Residential lots, yes.
What is the actual area that is being used? Acreage, do you have that?
I do not have that. I'm sorry. But...
And the statement for the minimum of 10,000 square feet, is that a city of Fayetteville or is that a county?
That is a county standard.
All right, that's all I had. Anybody else got any questions for Seda? All right. Then if the applicants here would like to speak?
George DeCane with Blune Associates. We actually went and did, we've got 25 and 1/2 acres. So we did a two lots buildable per acre, which left us with 50 lots, which is why we did that reduction. Tried to get rid of the lots, bring them more into conformance with a two lots per acre type of development. Did also want to bring into your attention if on the map that shows the lots that were under an acre, there is a subdivision that's to the top right. It's called Horsebend. And on that subdivision, that was a 22-acre subdivision, and that one has 52 lots. So we're actually below the density that was approved with that Horsebend subdivision. Now, it's outside of the half acre, but it's still within Washington County and very visible on the map if you take a look at it. If you have any questions, I am here for...
All right, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Again, three minutes, 10 minutes if you're speaking for a group. Be respectful of the time. So if anybody wants to speak from the public?
There we are. Good evening. My name is Scott Jackson. I live at 2805 Altus Drive, which is to the immediate northeast of the property. I spoke last month. I'm not going to do too much to rehash the same points because I think they all apply here. I'll be honest with you, nothing's changed here. I mean, you know, we went from 54 lots to 50. We put lipstick on a pig, window dressing, whatever we want to call it, that's all this is. We just kind of shifted around some things and are now trying to squeak it through. I will briefly address Horse Barn Estates, which is, I don't know, a mile, mile and a half, maybe more down Gully Road off of Highway 45 where you have multiple points of ingress and egress. of ingress and egress into that neighborhood, down both Gully out to Joyce, down Gully out to Highway 45, through Bridgewater Estates, there's, there's multiple points of entrance and exit, exits. We're talking about this large scale development sitting directly on Highway 45, which I think is a significant difference. I, I feel like we're also trying to use these other neighborhoods as precedent for some reason, and I know that from the last comments at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that we, we take each development on its own merits, which I know this board will do tonight. What I do worry about from a precedent standpoint is where does this go from here? There's a lot of land out Highway 45. We've seen it be developed out into Goshen, we've seen what that's done to our traffic and to our highway, to our schools. I don't know that our schools can handle much more at this point. And yet here we are talking about this development and where does it go from here if this is the new precedent? I thought the precedent was an acre, I thought that was the minimum that we had set by ordinance and here we are trying to squeeze in as many houses as we can into a property. And make no mistake about it, we all understand why. Land is expensive. To do a development like this, you have to put that many houses in there for you to make a profit as a, as a developer. I get it, I'm not, I'm not faulting them for wanting to develop the land and make money. But, but here's, here's the problem with that, is that when we start squeezing as many houses as we can into this piece of property, at what point is that a county problem? It's not a county problem, that's an investor problem. If you're making an investment that's not profitable because you can't build, you know, in satisfaction of the one acre minimum, that's not the county's problem and it's certainly not the neighbor's problem. So, so just calling it what it is, we're trying to build as many houses as we can to spread out the cost of this expensive piece of property and I just don't think that that's a county, a problem the county should concern itself with. I've mentioned before the, the nearby Mud Creek, I won't, I won't mention it again other than to say it is obviously very close to what this step system that would be put in for this particular neighborhood. You know, I, I don't think I have any more comments than that. I, I will say this, I started last time and I'll, at this meeting with this statement and I'll end this time with it, I am not opposed to a development on this piece of property. There is a right way to do it and there is a wrong way to do it. Taking a 56 lot subdivision, a 54 lot subdivision, a 50 lot, what's the difference? It's a dense, dense neighborhood and it does not deserve to be directly on Highway 45 like this one is. Thank you.
Next. Yeah, just leave that microphone on, that'll make it easier.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to echo some of the things that Mr. Jackson said, but first of all, I mean, I thank you as our neighbors for serving on...
Hey, let me do this right quick, state your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. My name is Robert McEver, I live at 4446 East Windermere Drive. So, again, thank you for your service. We, as your neighbors, are counting on you. As Mr. Jackson says, it's, it's not about just the density here, it's the size of this, this subdivision and how it's gonna affect sprawl and the quality of life really for all of us, because this is coming to someplace in Washington County sooner or later. We're growing and we have to grow responsibly. You can't pick up the paper anywhere or anything about and read about Northwest Arkansas or talk to the, you know, the people like the Northwest Arkansas Council who are trying to grow responsibly and not have them talk about sprawl and quality of life. And really, it falls to you as our representatives and our neighbors to, as you well know, protect us and, and advocate for smart growth. And I think all of, you know, 50 houses just crammed in here along 1,000 feet of road on Highway 45 is not gonna be good for that traffic and certainly not gonna be good for our schools and it's just not responsible growth. So, again, thank you for your service and I appreciate you listening to me.
Anyone else?
I'm just gonna say this real quick, I'm Beth McEver, I live at 4446 East Windermere with that man. So, my thing is, since our last meeting, I witnessed personally and sat in traffic for accidents on 45 and they all had ambulances there and everything and I hope no one was hurt very bad, but we're just, if you put in 50 more house, 50 more homes and that many more cars, you're increasing your chance of more accidents and someone getting killed. It just bothers me, I pull out there every day and I just like cringe to see when, I want to say one thing, it's not just about everybody that currently lives on 45, it's also about these 50 homes. They won't know that they're getting into this sprawl and the traffic and everything and then they will be in the same position. The people that move into those 50 homes won't have a clue that they're gonna have to be pulling out on that road or to get their kids to school, rush out there and it'll take them, you know, an hour to get a mile and a half down the road. But that's just all I had to say. I appreciate your time, thank you for listening to us.
Yes ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Tanya Sanchez, I live at 4865 East Woods Edge. One of the things that hasn't been discussed, I think maybe I did discuss it, is the entry road to this neighborhood is gonna be exactly opposite of our neighborhood, creating a brand new intersection. So I wish y'all would consider that. I wish you would drive there and sit and try to turn left at 7:30 AM before you consider the CUP. It's impossible. And when I'm gonna be sitting there across, it's directly across, if you look at the map, you can see it's an extension of my street, there's no plans to do anything to facilitate us who have lived in this neighborhood, some of us for decades. The new neighborhood will just be sitting there looking at residents from 50 houses turning, no light, no turning lane, no plans for any upgrades. So if you could consider that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I think it was stated last month before the next person gets up, let me, let me state again. Any concerns with that road now there, I'm gonna ask you to take it to the highway department. That is a highway road, you know, there's nothing that the county can do in reference to that. You know, I, I think, I think over the years, we understand what needs to be, what needs to be done to 45. So, all right, with that, someone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Jim Carson and I also, I live right across from this subdivision at the south, own land there and live there. And I know this is, this is repeating, but this highway situation is gonna be serious. It's already serious, that's a choke point there because of the two schools, the three schools actually, McNair, Vanderbilt and Vandergriff and Root School. And they, they pile up there in the morning, we get a stall line of traffic, stop and go, clear out two, which is a mile, mile and a half away from the first school, clear out two, our road. So this is a, I, I realize anything that is done to the road is a DOT situation for the state. And if they, maybe we can get them to put a stoplight there at some time, but that's a long drawn out process, I know. And between then and now, this is gonna be a total disaster if we have this kind of density there. And I just don't think that it's, it's right for you to allow this in the county. And that's all I have to say.
I'm Sam Rochell, I live at 4480 East Tross Spring Road directly south of the proposed development. I'm not gonna belabor the points, but just to follow up on the, the road situation, I understand that that's not in the purview of this committee, but it is in the purview of, of this, this situation and, and maybe that getting some pressure on the developers to address the Department of Transportation on this might provide the impetus needed to, to get those changes made. I understand that, that we can't do much about it, but we can also not make the, the, you know, problem worse by having more to the bottleneck, even if we can't immediately fix the bottleneck. But secondly, you know, again, I, I like to bring up Oakland Zion Road and Skilron Road because those are overflows that take a lot of this traffic, I believe those are both county roads. And so, you know, this certainly affects those and, and probably as much or more because as bad it is congested as 45 is, it's still a two lane highway and people expect that type of traffic. Oakland Zion and Skilron are residential roads that get completely overwhelmed during these peak times in the morning and so I think it, it's, it's beyond just the, the state highway department on it. If those are county roads and, and if that is, if my assumption is correct, that, that might be part of a county issue, but I can't add much more than that. But, but I really hope that you'll, you'll consider the density and, and once again, not against the development. I, I don't think we saw much change and, and I, I appreciate the board's, you know, expressing concern over the lot size and I hope that concern remains considering that the lot size didn't really change that much and the density didn't change that much. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Webb and I live at 4697 East Woods Edge Road. And I apologize for going against what you've already said about dealing with the highway department, I worked with the highway department for 30 years. And somebody needs to deal with them now about traffic counts, but especially about long range development, because I can't imagine that they're not gonna widen that to four lanes in the next few years. And maybe y'all have been in contact with them, okay? But that's, that's not gonna help us either. You know, that's gonna make the turns even worse and you don't want a turn lane in there and obviously a, a signal at the, at the bottom of that hill is probably not a great idea. We also have a couple of things I'd like to mention, we've got a really bad site problem coming over that hill from the west. Some of the people that live right on the highway can tell you that. When you're trying to get out and take a left hand or a right hand turn and you live where we live, you gotta really be careful because, I mean, you know, the speed limit starts at 55, you know, just on the other side and you know how people drive, they're gonna hit more than 55 coming down that hill. Another thing is, we've got a real deer, deer crossing problem and we probably need some signs up there. I've had a deer hit me and Jim and Leah, you know, Jim's lived there his whole life, Leah lives right there by the highway. It's amazing, you know, how many deer we've seen dead in that, those ditches and I'm, you know, I feel for the deer, but I also feel for the people. And like I said, I apologize for reiterating things that you didn't want me to, but they're just things that I wish you would keep in mind, please.
Will do.
I'm Leah Randolph and I reside at 4653 East Mission Boulevard. This development is a travesty on the environment and the people living there. They are damming in the pond and they're going to cut down all the mature growth trees. The impacts of the pollution levels in the water from the stormwater pond is going to be really great. It's only 200 feet from Mud Creek. The road constitutes, the roads that meander, will meander around the neighborhood will constitute a major source of pollutants from the vehicles, the metals, the brake linings, the petroleum. The density of the vehicles is too concentrated for the environmental impact, being that Mud Creek runs right behind it. Since a significant portion of pollutants entering the pond, the stormwater pond is associated with particles from pollutants, the stormwater pond will prove to act as a reservoir of pollutants. And being that, it is only 200 feet from Mud Creek, that is a big risk environmentally. Per Mr. Jackson, please, let's be the gold standard moving forward for development for Washington County and follow the regulations and adhere to the regulations that are in place for the agriculture zoning of one acre. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My name's William Clark, I reside at 4295 East Tross Spring Road. I noticed in the city plan for 2040, city of Fayetteville, plan for 2040, one of the lofty items there is the statement that we will discourage suburban sprawl. This is a good example of suburban sprawl and if it's gonna be discouraged in the, in the, in the plan, be a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brian Ketchum at 2676 Oakland Zion Road, I'm at the northwest corner of East Tross Road. We're already overwhelmed with the traffic. When I try to get out to go to work, my driveway is on Tross Spring, all the cars coming already from Oakland Zion to Skilron so I can get to work. And when I take my grandkids to school on 45, the traffic is bad. When I first heard this project, all I see is dollar signs for whoever's developing this. That's fine. The numbers that I heard, 50, it doesn't matter, it does matter. If you want to build nice subdivisions, like they're being built down the road from there, across the street and stuff, that's wonderful. But 56 houses and I gotta deal with it coming up and even walk or jump in the fence to come down that street and stuff. I'm hoping when I retire or if I pass away, my wife will be safe and won't have to deal with all this, 56 whatever the numbers are. I appreciate your time, it's just, I hate to see somebody get filthy rich to make everybody else have a miserable life and especially for the children that are going to these schools, they're already overloaded now, they can't handle all this. Y'all have a nice night, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Helen Duran and I live at 4274 Tross Springs Road. Tross Springs Road is a residential drive due west of where the subdivision will be going in. I've lived at this address almost 20 years and I've lived in Fayetteville an additional 25 years. And the thing that bothers me with the way this particular plot is written, it goes against the things that Fayetteville has worked for. One of the statements is, and this says existing condition of property, it says the property has structures on it and is wooded to a degree, well, it is very wooded. It says the plan is the structures, house sheds, and the wooded areas will be removed. That goes totally against the tree ordinances in Fayetteville that have been worked on for years and years and years. The other thing that really bothers me with this design is why invade, I understand for the subdivision, it's gonna be 30 plus homes for safety needs and two exits from the subdivision to get to the main highway, but why invade Eastern Park? Why invade those residents that barely have lived there? Why not bring the road back to 45? It does not design that way because they've got... It does not design that way because they've got the drip line out there. And if you look, they keep hearing that Eastern Park has a decentralized sewer. They do, Septic, but they're side by side. You're not pumping from the south side north for almost two hundred, three hundred feet. And I know that design will eventually be approved or not approved by the Arkansas Health Department. But if this is redesigned, where this road can come back to forty-five entrance and exit, one, it would not invade our space because the lights are going to be coming through Windermere Road, which will be directly to, the Clarks will be directly into my backyard. And I think if I had ever known that Eastern Park subdivision was going to have a cut through, I would have never signed off on it. And I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right. Does the applicant want to respond to anything? Are you good, or?
All right. So I want to address the driveway because it's come up a lot. So, we are thirty lots. And if you look at the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, the Fire Prevention Code says that we have to have two exits that are half the longest diagonal of the property apart from each other. All right? That means that East Park is one of them, which meant that the closest one that we could have was the one that we're exiting on forty-five in the location where it's at. I can't get any closer because then it would go counter the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. So, got to have one entrance over there. The second thing is, we were required to tie into that cul-de-sac. Our developers don't want to, but we were required by the City of Fayetteville to tie into the cul-de-sac, to tie into all those items. So, it's, you know, they put aside eight thousand dollars when they developed that, or that subdivision, to pay towards getting rid of the cul-de-sac and making the connection make it all the way through. I think you guys are aware, City of Fayetteville does require connections north, south, east, and west. It's not like we can get away from that. They also have block length requirements, six hundred and sixty feet. For the most part, we have met that. I mean, we have the six hundred and sixty feet. You know, we try to limit the access points onto Mission, but it's just because really didn't have an additional point on trying to get another second access point out to Mission. But our, the one access point that's on Mission currently is because the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code requires it to be there. As for the detention ponds, they work like every other detention pond in every other subdivision that we have. You guys have seen them before. I mean, a few of you may have designed them before. But we, detention ponds are what they are. And we meet City of Fayetteville's requirement for it. We meet county requirements for them. We're actually going to go through two different engineering reviews in that respect. Now, I can't counter what they said about the pollution. I mean, you're going to have pollution no matter what you do. And whether you have twenty-five lots, whether you have fifty lots, you're going to have some of that coming down the ground. It's just, that's how, you know, you've got cars, you're going to have some pollution. Can't get away from that. But hopefully, the grass, everything that it goes into, slowing the water, leaving your subdivision as it goes, gives it time to maybe settle into the grass a little bit and help diminish some of that pollution leaving the site. Other than that, I am here for any other questions, but I thought I'd let you know. But again, twenty-five lots, fifty lots, you know, no matter what, you know, I don't know if they would be for any one of these particular ones. But we are doing two lots per acre, which is even less than an equivalent one.
Hey, hang on. Hey, y'all? He gave y'all respect. I expect the same thing in return.
Two lots per acre, which is what is an equivalent, is less than the RSEP four, which is almost the lowest single-family residential subdivision zoning that Fayetteville has. That would allow four lots per acre. We are exceeding the ten thousand square feet that SITA did mention, and that is a county regulation. So, and we have gone through the City of Fayetteville process to try and make all these different requirements kind of work together for this subdivision. It's, I mean, we've been doing this now. We've been trying to work through this whole process, three, four months, and we started with something a little different. We actually started with six thousand square foot lots. And now we're up to, you know, almost a third of an acre, point three. So, just wanted to kind of bring those points. I am here if you do have any questions, but we have actually gone through a much denser subdivision, and now we have significantly reduced the number of lots that we even started. And you guys weren't privy to it because we started at City of Fayetteville. So, we went something highly dense to less dense to less dense to where we are today. So, we keep trying to reduce the density to meet something that would be acceptable for everybody. And I don't know if that helps. I don't know if that works, but that's what we're, we keep working towards that less denser area, trying to find a good medium area for everybody.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. To the board.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification. So, our purview, what we're looking at, we hear a lot about City of Fayetteville's approved this, the county's deferred. Our purview is not design, it's not ingress egress, it's not traffic, it's not, our purview is strictly lot size, correct?
That's correct. Under the state law, because this is inside the city's growth area, when it comes to subdivisions, as far as the subdivision design, that all falls directly under the jurisdiction of the city. However, the zoning issue, which would be addressing the lot sizes, falls directly under the jurisdiction of the county. And so, I've spoken with the City of Fayetteville. You know, we don't have any say in the design, but they will not move this project forward unless a conditional use permit is passed by the county. That would, then, that's one of the conditions of this project even moving forward for them.
If I may, one more question to staff. Do we know the distance from the Fayetteville city limits to this property?
It's under a mile.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question, Phil? Let me say a couple of things. You know, this is, you know, the hard part when you sit up here and you listen to everything and everything. It's a struggle. Because I sit there, and as long as I've been in the construction market, I can tell you that City of Fayetteville, if this is strictly City of Fayetteville, it's stamped and they're gone, and we're not even having this discussion. They would have done it, you know, probably on your first thing, you know, with that, even though whatever they say and so forth and so on. The other, the other struggle for me is, you know, I've lived here twenty-seven years. I've seen what forty-five's done. I've seen the developments out there. I've seen the struggles with the traffic out there, and everything continues to grow. This area is going to grow. You know, you're two, three years out from being six hundred thousand plus. You're five, ten years out from being a million people plus. And the hard part is, it's forty-five. We need infrastructure. We all know that. We need it everywhere, in both Benton and Washington County, or all over those two counties. In the next few years, it's going to look like forty-five does every morning. So, you know, I fight both ways with that. You know, I would have liked to have seen, you know, just a few less lots to get that up a little bit more. You know, my first initial thought was half-acre lots on that would have been good with me. That, you know, the clarification is, I understand we have a, we have guidelines there, and it's under the codes and so forth and so on to say one-acre lots and everything. But that's also back on this board's responsibility at times to deviate and vote against those. It doesn't mean that that's set in stone. It means that we can deviate off of that. So, you know, with that one, you know, this is a struggle for me, you know, especially, you know, with the traffic that's right there and the number of lots. But that, you know, it's still development, and development's going to happen, continue to happen in northwest Arkansas.
Mr. Chair, I concur with what you said, and also hear and feel the struggles. As I mentioned at our previous meeting, you know, I lived in Ocean, raised three kids. Fifteen years ago, I had a hard time getting down Highway forty-five to get kids to school. And there's been numerous subdivisions that's added on to that. You know, if this, if this property was a mile west of where it is, this is what the City of Fayetteville wants. Actually, we've talked about, I've heard urban sprawl, more density actually decreases urban sprawl. This is the type of infill that the City of Fayetteville wants to see. They want to see higher density on existing properties that are already serviced with roads, with fire departments, police departments, and not the city limits keep expanding out. That being said, I would envision that this property, a lot of these properties, will be annexed into the City of Fayetteville at some point. Now, all that being said, I know we serve Washington County. We don't serve the City of Fayetteville. But it is, in my mind, exactly what you said. It's a struggle because the City of Fayetteville has approved or recommends approval of this development. But it's up to us to decide on the overall density of the project. Thanks.
My question of the county attorney was, no matter what we do, this is going to go to the quorum court and for their approval also? Is that a question?
Right.
Is this going to go to the quorum court for their stamp also?
Yes. This will be a CUP approval. It'll have to go and be ratified by the quorum court, whether we vote no or yes or no.
Well, if you vote no, then it won't go on to the quorum court unless an appeal's filed.
They'll have to file appeal. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Ellis State's CUP as presented with staff recommendations.
There's a motion for approval? There's a second? Do roll call.
Joel Kelsey?
No, ma'am.
Philip Humbard?
No, ma'am.
Neil Helm?
Yes.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Yes. Motion approves three to two. Onto the next item, Fayetteville Planning Area, Ellis State's pre-subdivision presented SITA, will you wait just a second? We'll let the room clear. Yeah, if you will. Yeah.
I thought Lauren said yes.
All right, SITA, if you will.
Hold on just a second. Sir, I think we need four for a quorum, for a CUP.
Oh, wait a minute. You're right. You're right. They may want to know that. I'm sorry. That is totally my mistake. I totally missed that. Based off of seven members, we have to have a vote of four to one in order to approve that. So, with the three to two vote, it doesn't pass. It fails. So, therefore, I apologize, ma'am. Therefore, you'll have, in order to go to the next step, you'll have to take an appeal to the quorum court. So, I apologize that. I totally missed with the two ladies not being here just took the majority, but I apologize for that. So, anyway, so, that takes care of the next item on the agenda. So, now we will go down to new business conditional use permit hearings under the county, Tree Top View CUP. SITA.
Oh, my gosh. Still good. Yeah. Just got to go to quorum. All right.
Okay. This is the Tree Top View Conditional Use Permit request, and it's located within the southern parts of the county. The subject partial, uh, partial, parcel, excuse me, is situated along the east side of Highway one seventy and is outside of any planning area. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to install and operate an ice vending So, this is not the vending machine that the applicant is going to install. This is just an example of, just to give the board an idea of what an ice machine kind of looks like. So, applicant states that the customers will be able to choose how they want their ice fended, pre-bagged or directly shoot it into their own container. Aside from ice, there will also be filtered water that customers can use to fill up their larger water containers with. The applicant will have to install a concrete pad to place the ice machine on. Additionally, the applicant will also install a carport-type structure over the machine to shield the machine and drive up customers from the elements while obtaining ice or The existing, this is the existing entrance to the property, and the ice machine will be left of this. The blue oval represents approximately where the machine will be. This is the sight distance looking left or south along Highway one seventy. This is looking right or north along Highway one seventy. And this is directly what's across the street from the entrance. Notifications were sent to property owners within three hundred feet, and to date, staff has not received comments expressing opposition or approval of the project. Staff has reviewed, there were supplemental documents and recommends approval or approval of this CUP with the following conditions, and these conditions have not changed since the sum of your staff report. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. Looking at the picture with the construction, you know, the backhoe and everything in the back?
Yes.
Is this just going to be a lot where they're just going to stick a ice machine? Or is this something where they're going to have RV park?
No, sir. He is building two small cabins for his sons to live on, and they are right behind that, where the backhoe is.
Has this piece of property been before us?
No. If you were to go-
What's the acreage on this?
The acreage?
Because if he's building two cabins side by side, doesn't that?
It's one unit per acre. It's a few acres large. I apologize. I don't have the acreage. It's-
Is it? Okay.
Hold on. Three point seven acres.
Okay. All right. That's all I got. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Is the applicant here? Would they like to say anything? Just state your name and address, sir.
Jerry Napier, one-four-six-six-three Friendship Church Road, West Fork. These, there's two properties here. There's three point seven acres on the front property, and the back property is four point five-three acres, I believe. I do have a plot of those properties here. Just a second. I should have the size. It does, I don't have the exact size of the back property, but total is a little over eight acres for both pieces of property. And these two cabins are built, one on the front property, one on the back property. Okay? I'm building those cabins for my grandsons to live in. I have four grandsons, so we're only building two cabins at this point. At some point, I will come back and try to divide this, okay? To build two more cabins, obviously.
Gotcha.
Anyway, the reason I'm here is because I have to have a nine-one-one address for this ice machine.
Okay.
Okay? I have nine-one-one addresses for both pieces of property currently, and have to have water meters on both pieces of property. But I have to have a water meter for that ice machine. Okay?
Okay. Thanks, sir. Anybody in the audience want to comment on this one? All right. To the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, which one is it? The Tree Top View CUP?
All right. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, sir. Next item, Moya, I'm hoping I pronounced that right, twenty-twenty-one CUP, presented by SITA.
Okay, so the Moya 2021 CUP is located within the northwestern portion of the county. It's outside of any city planning area and sits on the eastern side of Highway 59. The applicant is requesting conditional use permit approval to utilize a tract of land for cultural and community events. This project came before the planning board on September 26th in 2019 and was ratified by the quorum court on October 17th, 2019. The conditions of the CUP and county ordinance state that applicants granted a CUP and not undergoing development review have 18 months to satisfy the conditions of their CUP. With the pandemic occurring in 2020 and still ongoing, the applicants were not able to satisfy the conditions of their CUP before the April 2021 expiration date. The applicant is here again to seek approval, a new CUP, in order to obtain more time to finish out their project. As stated in the 2019 staff report, cultural and community events are considered, are not considered a permanent change to the land use. The CUP is to allow the Mongs Association to continue using this property for cultural and community events and to ensure that the restrooms are in compliance with the health departments and that the permanent structures proposed, the gazebo and the restrooms, are in compliance with state fire code. So this is the entrance from Highway 244, which runs along the north side of the property. The applicant states that there will be no permanent parking area. The parking will be on the grass. The site is still vacant. No improvements have been made, aside for some gravel to indicate where the driveway will be. This is looking east. This is looking west. And this is looking west along Highway 244, and this is looking right or east along Highway 244. And this is what's across the street. Notifications were sent to surrounding property owners, and staff has not received any comments in opposition or in favor of the project. However, staff did receive a phone call from an adjacent neighbor voicing some concern over the restroom and septic location. They have a well, and they fear that the well will be contaminated if the septic field is placed too close. Staff has reviewed the supplemental documents and feels that the project can be made compatible with the following conditions. These are the same conditions from 2019, however, with one change made to the septic and sewer condition. Oh, there it is. The applicant must contact a designated representative and have their septic system redesigned. The leach field must be as far away from the western property as possible to avoid contaminating the adjacent property owner's well. Any questions?
Yes, Seda. Okay, we approved this a year and a half ago?
Yes.
And they had conditions they had to meet?
Yes.
What were those conditions that they had to meet that they didn't get done during COVID?
It's the septic. They weren't able to fundraise. That was a big thing.
They weren't able to what?
To fundraise. Oh, excuse me. That was loud. To raise funds within their community and being able to, not being able to gather and to communicate, put a damper in their fundraising efforts. They are, we can approve 290-day extensions of their CUP, but that would have taken them into the middle of October, which wasn't enough time.
Okay, so the conditions that we put on them on the approval?
Yes.
That they didn't do?
All of them.
In order to, in order to have that CUP and operate that CUP?
Yes.
They had to have those conditions met?
Correct.
Have they been having functions out there?
No.
Because I thought you said a while ago, in order to continue having their-
To continue having, they haven't had functions out there since 2019?
Okay.
Or before.
All right. That was my question. Okay.
Okay, so I'm the new guy. CUP is good for one year if it doesn't-
The CUP is good for one year if you are undergoing a development review. If you are, if you have a CUP and you're not going to go under any type of development review, so your project is less than an acre in size, then you have 18 months.
So this is just to extend approval for another year to allow them to do what we'd already approved previously?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's no fundraising, and if we come back in a year and we're just like this again, how many times can you ask for an extension?
You can ask for 290-day extensions one time.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? All right. Anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I certainly see how COVID could slow down this process. I had no issue giving them another year or so. I make a motion we approve whatever's, MAUA, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce it, 2021 CUP as presented, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion approves unanimously. On the development hearing section under the Springdale Planning Area, item E, Sonora Boat and RV Storage Pre LSD. Seda.
The Sonora Boat and RV Storage Proposal is located within the eastern portion of the county. The subject parcel sits just north of East Highway 412. The CUP for this proposal was approved at the June 10, 2021 Planning Board meeting and ratified by the quorum court on July 15th. The applicant is seeking preliminary approval to construct a storage facility that will be sized for approximately 118 boats and/or RVs. The storage spaces will be a mixture of covered, enclosed, and open. The subject parcel is currently vacant and is accessed from Highway 412. The main entrance will handle two-way traffic, while an additional driveway along the western side will be for exiting traffic only. There will be a detention pond along the northern portion of the septic parcel. This pond is designed, so the post-development flows will be equal or less than the pre-development flows. There will be no onsite office. No septic was required because they will not have facilities. The only utility they will have will be water. This is looking left or east along Highway 412. This is right or west along Highway 412, and this is what's directly across the street, which are the schools. Notifications were sent to surrounding property owners, and staff has not received comments expressing concern or approval of the project. No questions were asked during this period. The applicant is still working with the county engineer in regards to drainage. Should the board approve this preliminary large scale, the applicant will still have one more round of construction plans for review, and that will be primarily between the applicant, planning staff, and the engineers. Staff recommends approval of this project with the following conditions, and these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Ask for clarification, so I have this on record. This piece of property is not owned by the individual on the east side of this property?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I had one question for clarification. You said the only utility would be water. Is there not electric on the property, on the project as well?
There might be electric lines, but as far from what I, my understanding is, there's not electric needed at the property. Like, the storage units will not be heated or cooled or anything like, environmentally controlled.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So it's going to be, it's going to be open? It's not going to be individual?
No, there won't be like individual, like, traditional mini storage where you have like, you know, stalls that are closed, enclosed?
The screening? Okay, all we're doing is approving pre-LSD.
This is the preliminary.
So once, if we approve pre-LSD and this comes back, then we'll get to see actually what that's going to look like?
Correct.
As far as screening, everything and so forth?
Yes. The next time this comes back will be for final, and then we'll have, everything should be in place.
Anybody else? Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
My name is James Gertz. I'm the engineer on the project. I just want to clarify, we probably will have electric onsite. This is going to be planned to have a kiosk to allow entrance into the facility, and there will be garages. I don't know if the owner is going to have garage doors or any other lighting on their site. That's up between him and the builder for the units, but he's still working through that.
You said there were going to be garages for boats?
There will be some garages, but I don't know if he's going to have them electrified. So we will have some roll-up units in there, but... Well, I just want a little clarification on myself from Seda. My understanding is we do the pre-LSD, we get construction approval?
Yes.
We construct it, and then final is after we construct it?
Yes.
So I just want to clarify, it sounds like you guys might be-
Okay, so I'm asking for clarification, because that's not what I thought a while ago.
I just want to make sure I'm right.
Yeah, I thought a while ago with my question that we would, we would do this, and then they'd have to come back for the final on that, which we would be able to see what all this is going to look like, other than this little piece of paper here, which is just drawings to me.
So the, the way it flows is there's preliminary, there's construction review if needed, and it is needed in this case. It's being requested by the engineers. And then there's the final, and the final is the final, the constructed as-built.
So I don't get to look at anything that shows me what this is going to look at? What screening is going to have around this place? I mean, is it just going to be open? We're just going to pull off the road, and it's just going to be a bunch of buildings? We're going to have some type of screening since this is a storage facility?
We did call for-
I mean, that's, you know, I mean, if we've gone through the process, that's fine, but it's, in order for me to feel comfortable voting on something, you know, I'd kind of like to know what it's going to look like and what it's, you know, if there's, if there's some type of screening, then just a bunch of storage buildings sitting out there in the open when you drive by. So, I mean, that's, I mean, I know the city's different than the county, absolutely, but that's just, okay.
So let me, Mr. Chair, forget. So you mentioned that the engineers will require construction review?
Yes.
Who does that construction review?
We have contracted engineers with Carver, so it is a third party.
We are currently planning for a chain link fence around the property and have that on our site plan.
Okay.
I assume there'll be lights as well? I mean, that was my question about electricity. I assumed there'd be lights. I also assumed there'd be a place to charge batteries on boats if you're going to store boats there.
That is something the owner would have to address. He's, he's simply looking at this for just buildings right now for storage. He probably will have some security lighting on there, but I haven't had any details, discussions with that yet.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone in the audience want to address this? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back. I'm going to go back to my deal.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this item until we get more details on what's going to actually be going on out here. I'd like to see at least some idea of what the construction, I mean, right now we've got a horseshoe that's gravel, it looks like, with something. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you, Philip, because I don't see no buildings. I don't see no screening, you know?
I don't see lighting.
Lauren's asking about lighting. I mean, is it just going to be dark? There's no going to be able to charge? I mean, you know, I'm, you know, I'm going to, there's a motion to table on the, on the board.
I'll second.
I'm going to second to table. Juliana, roll call, please.
Joel Kelsey?
Yes.
Philip Humbard?
Yes.
Neil Helm?
No.
Jay Piercy?
No.
Lauren Shackelford?
Yes.
And then it's not tabled, because it doesn't, it doesn't meet the table?
It, it is because-
No? I thought we had it for.
This isn't for a quorum. This doesn't go to quorum court.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, gotcha.
So it's a majority of members present.
Man, I'm lost.
Three to two.
Okay, gotcha.
Mr. Chair, can we give the applicant some suggestions on what we'd like to see?
Absolutely. I was going to ask for clarification on what county requires.
I'd like to see base elevations. I'd like to see some sort of architectural drawing of what the structure is going to look like. I'd like to see what the setbacks are from property lines from the front, that sort of thing. You mentioned the fencing. I think I'd like to see where the fencing is, any sort of proposed screening to neighbors or that sort of thing.
I guess I'd be curious, what did you guys receive in your packets?
We have one picture of a horseshoe shape.
I mean, I've put together an entire set of plans that details all of this out. I do not have the elevations of the buildings, but I just want to clarify that I believe we've submitted everything the county requires for us LSD supplemental, and I don't know if elevations are strictly required in that supplemental checklist. I just wanted clarification on what you guys are looking for, so I can tell my owner I need to have him prepare something for this.
I think for me, with, with the add to Lauren, is that when we're sitting up here and we're looking at something, just in order to just look at a piece of paper, and I don't have a problem with this storage facility being there.
Okay.
But I can't use the word that my stepdad used to tell me all the time about when we're going to do something, this is how we're going to do it. We're not going to do it like this. But for me to sit here and look at that, and I see this, and I don't know what the screening is going to be, I don't know if you're going to do buildings or not buildings, if it's just going to be a bunch of boats and stuff that's out in the middle of the field, kind of in reference to the guy next door, and I, and I don't mean that's two different properties, but no electricity to where that you're just going to have a storage facility out there with no lighting, no nothing, the security factor of that, you know, has a little concern to me. There's just a number of what-ifs for me.
Okay. Well-
You're welcome to look. That's, that's what we have.
And maybe I just need to clarify what you're seeing on that picture. All the stalls, all the parking areas are enclosed. There should just be diagonaled parking stalls. There's a structure that has a hatch along the outside indicating a structure.
We got a site plan.
Yeah, all we have is a site plan that shows us-
Do you mind if I approach and?
Yeah, I don't mind. You can bring it up here. But there's still, there's still concerns for me besides just, yeah, that's what we have.
Yeah, so this, this is showing-
No, that's exactly what we have.
This hatch is showing this is going to be enclosed, and I even call out metal building three-sided, metal building all sides enclosed, and then this is also a three-sided building.
Okay. See, I can't, I can't see that even, even if I zoom in on it, it doesn't. Yeah, that's for me. So, I mean-
I mean, there's, there's, right now, there's not a time constraint for me to bring this back to you, but I just want to make sure, for my own professionalism, given to the board what's required.
I understand.
And knowing that the county has mentioned any kind of buffering requirements that are needed for this, we've already gone through the CUP process, and I believe there weren't anything listed on that. So that's just, just from myself and my professionalism, I've pretty much checked all the checkboxes, but we can get you more.
It might be nice just to bring us a hand copy.
I think the concerns that we've listed as far as the lights, the electricity, and so forth, I think for some clarification for me and a general idea, then just to look at that little rect, long rectangle there, what a general idea of what those are going to look like?
Yeah.
Would really help me in making a determination than if we're just going to approve a gravel lot to put boats on, no lights, no nothing.
Are you looking for elevations with colors?
I don't have to have that.
That, that would be my preference. I know that's not a requirement, but if you can give me some idea of what the Washington County citizens are going to see when they drive by the road, down the road and look at this, what this thing's going to look like?
Okay.
Just so we would get a better feel for what we're approving. I can't speak for the rest of the, of the board members, but that's going to help me.
I'm going to second that.
Okay.
So, okay. But let me do this for clarification. We are tabling in it till the next meeting. Okay?
Okay.
So five weeks from now. Okay?
All right. Will we need to do re-notifications? Will we need to do re-notifications?
Possibly.
I guess the county will handle that, but just let me know what you need, then.
Will do, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. All right. Nexus County Baker Mountain Minor Subdivision, presented by Seda.
Okay, the Baker Mountain Minor Subdivision request is located within the southwestern portion of the county. The subject parcel is outside of any planning area and sits west of Baker Mountain Road. The applicant is requesting approval to take a 5.66 acre lot and split it into two parts, tract A being 1.65 acres and tract B being 4.01 acres. Proposed lots are both, uh, less than five acres in size, so they do not qualify for administrative review. The subject parcel is currently vacant. The soil analysis for both tracts A and tract B show that their grounds are suitable for septic systems. Uh, this is the current, and, uh, proposed entrance to tract B. This is looking left or north along, uh, Baker Mountain Road from the entrance to tract B. And this is looking right or south from tract B. Notifications were mailed to property owners within 300 feet. Uh, staff has not received comments from any member of the public in regards to this project. Staff recommends approval, uh, of the project with the, these following conditions, and these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Is the applicant here, do they want to say anything?
Uh, good evening, my name is Alan Reed. I'm here representing, uh, Lee Hall on this project, and, um, I think Seda pretty much said it all, but, uh, Mr. Hall would just like to divide the property into two pieces. And, uh, being as though they were less than five acres, we're here in front of you asking to, for your approval.
All right.
If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Second. Second.
Yeah, my mic's not on, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, fi, final item under conditional use permit hearing has been tabled by the applicant, which leads us to other business? Anything on one of those two bullet points, other than we look at the upcoming dates of the next meeting? All good? Good, good? All right, then with that, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody.